And a call to order and invocation will be, but my apology if I mispronounce your name. Ayman Hali Id is doing invocation. Is this person here? Maggie? Okay, I don't know. That's why. Okay, so the person is not here. All right, so we're going to break the rhythm a little bit. Because I always believe that elected official shouldn't be doing invocations. It should be a person of religions, religious. So if any of my colleagues here would like to do invocations, I invite them to do invocations. Should you want to do it?
I will do that, Mayor.
Okay.
Everybody could please rise?
All right, thank you.
God of wisdom, we seek your help today. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us, oh Lord, as we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity so that we can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda, reveal challenging areas and show us the best solutions that will apply. Point our eyes to every positive outcome since our last meeting and let these favorable results and developments encourage every heart in this room. Dear God, help us to apply your wisdom as we decide on all matters and make plans that benefit the future of our great city. This we pray in Yahweh God's name. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jim Cunine. Everyone, please join me in a salute to the great flag of this nation. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Heather, your first roll call.
Councilmember Constantine?
Here.
Councilmember Grandis?
Here.
Councilmember Harper?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Cunine?
Here.
Mayor Chair Bowie?
Here.
All council members are present.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Attorney, would you, is there any reporting closed session items?
There was no reportable action in closed session.
Okay, would you also clarify who stepped up from the closed session item, please?
Yes, during closed session, it came up that Mayor and Councilmember Grandis may have a conflict under the Levine Act due to a campaign contribution from a person, from Mr. Wallace. So an abundance of caution, we didn't find a conflict about him. An abundance of caution, they immediately stepped out of closed session and disqualified themselves. We're going to take a further look and see whether there is actually a conflict. And they may participate later, but for now, they took the cautious route.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam City Clerk, I'm going to call you today. Is there any supplemental communication?
I have no supplemental communications.
Thank you so much. City Attorney Maggie Lee, would you please give your update? I said, City Manager, right?
I can pass the bar, so I won't be able to take that title, but I appreciate it.
City Manager, my apology.
Mayor, City Council appreciate the opportunity to share with the community upcoming, future first-time offer of a Fountain Valley Citizens Academy. This will be a free opportunity for our community to be more engaged in city and also gives them the opportunity to learn what we do from an operation standpoint. So the Citizens Academy, citizens can go behind the scene and discover the inner workings of our city like never before. We are currently accepting interest to participate in the Free Citizens Academy. The program qualification must be at least eighteen years of age, must work or reside in Fountain Valley. And the application will be open Wednesday, July 2, 2025. An application will be due Wednesday, August 6, 2025. The application review will be Monday, August 11 through August 15. Notice to applicants would be the week of August 18. The program will begin on Wednesday, September 10 and continue through Wednesday, October 22. And up to twenty-five community resident or business can participate in this. And if you are not being selected, we will include you on the list for future opportunity. There will be more information on the city website at fountainvalley.gov and we will have ongoing communication with community when there is an application process for you to be more engaged in the city operation. I appreciate it, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you so much, City Manager, for the update. As for the Mayor's update, there's going to be another Tip a Cop this coming Wednesday, May 21st, between the hours of 5:00, 8:00 PM at the Black Angus location. My apology, it's a small print. I can't read the number. It's on Brokers.
Brokers and Talbert, and it's tomorrow.
Okay, all right, it's on Brokers and Talbert. So for those who want to... Thank you for asking. So the location is going to be on Brokers and Talbert. Please come out to support our local law enforcement. It's called Tip a Cop. Okay, if you're free, available on May 21st between the hours between 5:00 and 8:00 PM. Okay, on Wednesday, June 8th, the City of Fountain Valley will host Youth in Government Day, a program for third-grade students from Cox and Plaven Elementary School. City Hall will be closed to the public from 8:30 to 12:30 PM due to this event. The event is designed to reinforce classroom learning about local government and inspire future public servant. Once again, that date is Wednesday, June 4th, between 8:30 and 12:30 PM, right here at the City Hall. Okay, the community is invited to the 50 Years of Little Saigon Resilience on Thursday, June 5, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Great Wolf Lodge in Garden Grove, California, bringing together entrepreneurs, community leaders, and civic partners from across Southern California. This milestone gathering honors the remarkable journeys and contributions of the Vietnamese Americans over the past five decades. A Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce along with the Fountain Valley businesses will also be attendance, including elected official from City of Fountain Valley, Garden Grove, Santana, and Westminster. We are expecting over three hundred attendees. Okay, as a reminder, May is older Americans' month. So May 20th, Spring Fiesta Lunch. That's already passed. It was today, 11:30 to 1:00 PM. On May 22nd, What's in Your Medicine Cabinet? From 3:00 PM to 4:30. And there's also on the same day, May 22nd, Free Chair Volleyball from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM. And on May 27th, Free Music Performance by Perfect at 12:30 PM. And last but not least is Pro Bono Estate Planning Clinic on May 30th, between the hours of 2:00 PM and 4:00 PM. And if you would like to have more information, please contact the center at Fountain Village at 714-593-4446. That concludes my Mayor's message. Okay. Madam City Clerk, is there any unscheduled matter?
I have no request to speak on unscheduled matters.
Okay. And is there any scheduled matter that I want to speak?
I have one request to speak on Agenda Item 6.
Item 6? Okay, so Consent Calendar 1 to 6 will be approved simultaneously with one motion unless separate action or discussion.
You have a request to speak on 6.
I thought you were going to bring up on item 6, or you want to do it now?
What you do before the...
You can't vote on 1 through 6. Somebody wants to speak on 6.
Okay. All right, should I bring up the person now?
Pat Neal? Pat Neal?
Yeah, come up and speak.
Yes.
Thank you. I want to make sure you can hear me all right. I know my time is limited. I have six bullet points that I want to bring up. They don't have to be addressed, but I want them out there and I want them recorded. And at some time in the future, I would like a response. Item number one, I want to let you all know that everybody I've talked to, and I've talked to a lot of people, we are very, very supportive of the charter city going through. And I'll be happy when that comes to fruition. Item number two, I want to know just a number. How many sober living homes and ADUs have been approved for the City of Fountain Valley? They're going up everywhere and it's causing havoc in the neighborhoods. All I want is a number.
Ms. Neal, this is actually more appropriate for unscheduled matters. Right now, we're just talking on item number 6 on the agenda.
I was told this was open and I could bring up items.
You certainly can during unscheduled matters.
Okay. The other thing I want to bring up is a bullet. Item is in the transparency for California. It clearly states that executives in Fountain Valley get $575 a month for a car allowance. I just want to know if that's accurate or not. Plus, $75 a month for technology. I have no idea what that means, but it's in a publication. Okay, and the car allowance? How many people get that car allowance? Okay.
So because these are unscheduled matters that you're bringing up, the council can't respond. It's part of the Brown Act.
I understand that.
I'm just making sure that everybody understands why the council isn't answering. It's because the state law tells them that they can only comment on agendized matters.
Well, I was told this was an open forum and then I could address certain issues.
It is for you. It is for you. Council has different rules about what they can do.
All right, the next item I want to bring up is we would like to see Fountain Valley do something that I'm going to call a flag exchange. I walk my dogs every day. I walk throughout Fountain Valley and I see tattered, disgraceful American flags hanging. And I have presented before and would like to see some kind of exchange that people could bring in their old, tattered American flags and exchange them through the City of Fountain Valley for special occasions, Labor Day, Memorial Day, exchange a flag for free entrance into the Summer Fest, something. I personally have gone to multiple homes and said, if you take down that horrible flag, I'll get you a new one. And they've taken me up on it. But I think it would be a very nice gesture on the part of Fountain Valley if we could take down these horrible flags that I see hanging everywhere. Another item. In addition to the flag, most people do not know flag etiquette. And I can't tell you how many flags I have taken out of trash cans because people don't know how to properly dispose of them. So the other thing in a flag exchange, perhaps our fire department or someone can dispose of the flags properly because I can't tell you how many I've burned in my fireplace.
Ms. Neal, your three minutes is up.
Pardon me?
Your three minutes is up.
Give her a little extra time.
A little extra time, okay.
Yeah, so you know, we also allow for you to speak at the end of the meeting as well. If you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome to.
I do. I have two more items I'd like to bring up.
I'll add you to the unscheduled matters at the end.
So Mr. Mayor, I think there's a little confusion. So our agenda, you know, at this point is open session. We did the call to order, invocation, salute to the flag, the roll call, the supplemental communications, City Manager manager, Mayor update presentations. We had none, then came unscheduled matters only. Public speakers, public comments on scheduled matters. There may have been a little confusion here. So this was appropriate under unscheduled. So now...
That's correct, yeah.
Now scheduled matters, public comments.
Unfortunately, she's not allowed to speak twice on unscheduled matters in the same meeting. That's not allowed. But she spoke on the scheduled matter, so...
It was a miscommunication. The portion of the meeting that she was supposed to speak at was unscheduled. I understand.
So it's correct. You're not supposed to speak twice on unscheduled matters. She spoke on item number 6, but she was out of order and nobody... And she finished her comments on item number 6. She should not speak twice on unscheduled matters, but she was told that she could speak twice on unscheduled matters. So let's allow her to speak again just to make sure we are okay there.
Thank you.
Just note for further comments that are not as part of the agenda, go on unscheduled matters. It's not to create another hurdle or some red tape. It's so that we can run the meeting in an orderly fashion and get from point A to point Z in the most orderly way possible so that everybody can talk about the same item at the same time.
So if you stay until the end of the meeting, you know, your time is valuable. So we'll let you speak again. Okay, so on Consent Item Number 1 to 6, once again, will be approved simultaneously unless there's a separate action or discussion is required.
So I'd like to move Items 1 through 6 for approval.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have 1 to 6 approved placement. Please vote.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, okay.
Heather, we also have a gentleman on the Zoom. Can we check if he has any comment related to any of the items?
No, it's not a comment on... No, he doesn't have a comment for the meeting.
Okay.
So we voted?
Yeah, we voted.
Items 1 through 6 pass 5-0.
Okay.
I know, it's not reading it.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, did you say that we have someone speak on item number 6?
No, that was, she put Items 6, but it was the unscheduled matters.
Yeah, just want to double check. Okay, we want to move on to the initial item number 7, which is Report from Measure HH Advisory Oversight Committee on Year 2023-2024 Audit Measure HH Revenue and Expenditure Presentation by Randy Takayama.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm actually going to start the presentation and then I'm going to hand it over to Randy, who's on Zoom. He's the chairperson for the Measure HH Committee. So just to introduce this item, Measure HH, this is the audit for Measure HH for fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. So last fiscal year. And the mission of the HH Committee is to provide counsel oversight of Measure HH funds, how they're spent, and report back to council. So that's what this item is tonight. It's going to be the committee reporting to council on the last fiscal year. So just to review, Measure HH for fiscal year 23-24, the city received about 17.1 million of Measure HH funds during the fiscal year. We spent about 13 million of that on reoccurring items, which include paying down unfunded liabilities for CalPERS UAL of about 6.7 million. We paid down, we made an additional payment towards our unfunded pension liabilities of about 3 million. We paid off, or paid down our outstanding debt, about 2.4 million. And then we also had some infrastructure projects that were paid this year, which include the residential roadway rehab project, about 942,000. In addition, some of the Measure HH funds were set aside for future fire apparatus purchases, and that was about 365,000. And then the city used about 3.2 million of previously set aside HH funds for identified projects, which included the police locker room and the Fire Station 1 project. So all in all, at the end of the year, the bottom line Measure HH reserves were increased by about 851,970 after all the revenues and expenditures were accounted for. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Randy, who's going to do the committee's report.
Randy, if you could unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you. Thank you for the introduction, Ryan. I appreciate it. To the Honorable City Council, one of the provisions of Measure HH was the creation of an oversight committee to review and make recommendations to the City Council to ensure that revenues from the tax are utilized in accordance with the city's responsible spending pledge. The committee received a report from the auditor on April 24, 2025, and support the conclusion that all Measure HH funds are being used consistent with the legal requirements placed on the Measure HH funds. We are happy to say that we also believe that the city has gone beyond the legal requirements to ensure reporting that tracks Measure HH income, especially that portion of annual revenue that is carried over in reserves. As we mentioned in our last correspondence, there have been important changes to the way Measure HH reserves are identified in the budget and there are clear and transparent ways to track the Measure HH loan for the new fire station. As of this spring, we also have a new report card. We want to thank Ryan Smith and his team for their important work on this document. They listened to our feedback from the committee for over a year and produced a document that we believe clearly communicates how Measure HH funds are being spent to pay down debt and cover annual essential service expenses that the general fund cannot cover on an annual basis. We want to thank City Council, City Manager Maggie Lee, City Treasurer Ryan Smith, and his entire finance committee. I would also like to thank my fellow members of the HH Committee for their involvement and their tireless work in this endeavor. The committee looks forward to continued collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. So with that, I just want to, from staff side, thank the HH Committee for their work and their time that they put in towards this. And the recommendation tonight is just to receive and file the committee's letter. So unless council has any questions.
All right, before, Madam City Clerk, is there any public comment?
I have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, open the floor for comments from my colleague.
Yeah, I'll make a comment. First, I want to say thanks to Ryan and your team for getting through this, putting the new format in place with the HH Committee. I'd like to thank the HH Committee members for volunteering their time and expertise to serve on the committee. When this measure was passed in 2016, part of our commitment to the voters was that we would spend these funds in accordance with the way that we presented it to the voters. And part of that is we have a responsible spending pledge, which kind of prioritizes how we spend the money. And the ultimate goal, I think, is to have our pension liability paid down by the end of the measure when it sunsets and then be able to move forward with the balanced budget after the measure's in place. So as we look towards 2036, 7?
36, 37, yeah.
As we look forward to 2036 and 37, I know Maggie and Ryan and the team are really making sure that our spending, revenues and expenses are on target to meet that commitment. And I just want to communicate that to all our residents, that we take this very seriously. And once again, thank the HH Committee.
All right, anybody else?
Yes, I want to thank the...
Councilmember Constantine?
I want to thank the members of the Measure HH Advisory Oversight Committee. I attend the meetings and sometimes though when I don't, I watch on Zoom. Everything's great. Thank you, Ryan and team. And it's great. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, Councilmember Grandis?
I would like to thank the volunteers who sit on that committee as well. And I want to thank the Finance Department because this is a new breath of fresh air that HH is happy with the city and happy with the way we're doing things. And it shows we listen, you know? That's why we have an advisory committee. You came up with lots of great suggestions and Ryan and team has done a great job implementing your suggestions. And that's the way it's supposed to work. So thank you guys for your efforts. And I hope you appreciate the fact that we do listen to you. So thank you so much.
All right, anybody else? No? Okay. And I just want to concur with my colleague. It is important that you have an oversight committee and to, you know, have someone, especially from outside looking in, make sure that we do honor those pledges and follow through it. So I want to thank everyone for your time volunteering their decisions. Other than that, go ahead and call a motion on that item?
I make a motion to approve.
It's just a receiver.
Oh, receiving finally? Okay.
All right, I see. Thank you.
It says different here. Okay. Next item is Approval Amendment Number 1 to Consultant Service Agreement Number 1514 with Michael Baker International for Contract Assistant Planner Services Presentation by Omar De La Boy, Community Development Director.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. So we have an associate planner position and our associate planner was full-time. He is going back to grad school, which we're very encouraging of. And so he went, we took his full-time position, we made it part-time. And he's working with us about 20 hours a week. But to fill in the hours that we're missing from him, we've gone to Michael Baker and Associates. They have assigned an assistant planner to us, Kyle, who's doing great up there at the counter as well. We had an original contract for Kyle for $45,000. Our associate planner is almost through his first year, but to get us through his second year before he comes back full-time, we need to, we're asking that you provide a little bit more funding for Michael Baker and Associates to provide an assistant planner up there during those 20 hours a week. And it's being paid for through the cost savings for the full-time position being a part-time position. So those hours that we're not receiving from our associate planner, we're just using that funding to pay for this contract. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, before we comment, is there any public speaking on this one?
I have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, we'll open the floor for any comments from my colleague or discussion? Nope. Okay, so I think this one calls for a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
A second? Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Item number 8 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Amendment Number 3 to Extend Contract Number 22-11 from July 1, 2025 through July 1, 2026 with CityNet for Homeless Outreach Services in the amount of $376,999.66. Presentation by Jared Fattor, Police Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Today, the Police Department is going to be requesting an extension for the CityNet contract into the next year. We will have CityNet here to provide some success stories to you and to give you an idea of kind of what they've been doing over the last year. From the PD perspective, CityNet has been instrumental in our efforts to curb homelessness within our city with a priority on helping the unhoused while improving the quality of life of our citizens. The PD Special Operations Bureau has worked in conjunction with CityNet and the CCNC to help those in need. Our compassion-first approach has been effective, but we also hold those who violate the law accountable. I would like to take this opportunity to thank specifically our Special Operations Bureau, the people that are on the ground every day, helping the unhoused individuals while holding certain people accountable. And that's Sergeant Farmer, who is not here today. He's actually on a plane coming back from Florida. But I have with me Officer Ben Roddy, who I think is in the back, and Officer Shaw. Those are the two individuals along with Sergeant Farmer, who are out there every single day contacting people on a daily basis and doing really kind of the dirty work. They've literally cleaned up tons of debris. They've taken encampments down. And they're doing it with a very compassionate approach. And they're not able to do that job without the help from CityNet. CityNet continues to provide excellent customer service to the unhoused population by providing a multitude of resources from temporary shelters, transportation, job placement, all the way to permanent housing. I can't say enough about the strong collaboration between CityNet, the city, the CCNC, since I've been responsible for Special Operations Bureau. I've heard comments from many citizens in the city as of late that the city looks cleaner, there's less unhoused population on our streets. You can really see a noticeable impact. And that's because of the hard work of the police officers, the CityNet workers who are out there every single day, and obviously the support from you. So thank you. So thank you. I would like to ask Officer Ben Roddy, who's really the boots on the ground, to provide a little bit of insight, because he's dealing with CityNet every single day, to say a few words about his interactions with CityNet and their responsiveness. So if I can get Officer Roddy to come up?
Well, thank you. I was not expecting to come up here, so.
We have a lot of questions.
I'm ready to answer.
No pressure, yeah.
A quick synopsis of how I use CityNet is to explain every tool on my belt right here is used to deter crime, stop crime, apprehend people. We're now being asked to go into a role to help people in the sense of trying to find a house for them, resources. CityNet is that tool that I can put on my belt, on my phone, take out, call right away. Just two days ago, we had a situation on the north end of the city. There's two people in an RV. They were causing some issues in a shopping center. Within two days, I was working with Max, they are now in a shelter. I couldn't have done that without them. If we didn't have CityNet, it would be left to me to warn, advise, cite, and eventually arrest. And it wouldn't solve the problem. There's just become back to that same situation, causing more and more. So for me, it's absolutely imperative that I have that resource or that tool out in the field that I can call Max or Natalie of CityNet, they can come out to where I am and they can assist me by getting resources, shelter, or anything else that I usually in my unit patrol car that I don't have.
Thank you, Officer Roddy. So what you're seeing on the screen, this is a CityNet PowerPoint. And unfortunately, the CityNet representative who's supposed to be here is, got stuck in traffic. So hopefully he comes in, but I'm trying to stretch this thing as much as I can here. So this is a PowerPoint that was made by CityNet. This gives you an idea of kind of what they've been doing and what they're capable of doing and what we've seen them do throughout the time that we've had them. And it's been nothing but good collaboration between CityNet, the CCNC, and our city. If you can go to the next slide, please. So this is kind of what Officer Roddy was talking about. You have two CityNet workers that are out there five days a week, going throughout the entire city, including Miles Square Park. And usually they're contacting people before.
He's here. He's here.
Behind you, he's here.
So I'll introduce, CityNet, he's going to go or he's going to continue where I left off.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for your patience. My name's Andres. I am the program supervisor for Fountain Valley, along with Tustin and all of our LA contracts. So first off, I want to recognize our two staff who have been here serving the City Fountain Valley since the inception of the program. The first case manager I want to highlight is Natalie Seja. She's been here for cumulatively three years. She left to greener pastures, so she thought. And when she was out, she gave me a call saying, can I come back? And I said, of course, there's a position still open. And frankly, the position that you left open is the one that's still here. So if you come back, business is usual. But she's been here since the beginning, along with myself, which it was myself and her when we started the City Fountain Valley. And Max Gonzalez, I want to highlight him. He's actually been putting in a lot of work. In Natalie's short absence, he kind of took the contract on by himself and he established great rapport with all the officers here. And I also want to highlight that the officers have been really, really accommodating to us. They've been supporting not only our team, but efforts after hours. So for example, there are clients that we were looking for throughout the week and for whatever reason we could not find them. The special forces unit, they actually went out, would spot people and let us know the next day, hey, we spotted so-and-so around this area. So that would be our first course of action to make sure that we would catch them and hopefully offer services or continue where we left off on the case. Next slide, please. So I want to highlight two success stories. These two are actually really big for the city and for us as well. They were a long time coming. It was a cumulative effort of not only the police department, but ourselves and countless refusals and countless noes from these two clients. Unfortunately, I can't share their names due to their HIPAA protections. But the first success story I want to highlight, there was a longtime client here in the City Fountain Valley, very visible. They were working on their housing case for about two years. We had difficulty with him just because he would tend to flee from us when we would show up, not wanting to continue on whatever document and/or housing necessity in order to continue his case and be selected for supportive permanent housing through the County of Orange. Now, eventually he did get selected. He did not believe it at the time, and we had to reiterate many times, yes, this is real. We're almost at the endpoint. We just need to get these couple of things and make sure they're in place before they accept your case totally. And that's what he said. He just repeated that, I don't believe it, I'll believe it when it happens. And about, I want to say two months ago, he finally got the keys to his new apartment in Huntington Beach. And it was a really emotional moment for the team and for him. And I mean, he's great. He hasn't come back to the city since. He's, from what I know, really thriving over there with the case managers that are offered within the building that he is housing. For the second success story, there was another client that was also highly visible, very well-known in the city. The first time we made contact was about a year ago. This client would refuse every time and share a couple of expletives here and there. There'd be times where they wouldn't even let us approach them at any given moment. After multiple times and multiple efforts, not just from us, but also outreach and engagement from the county, officers who also tried to assist in the situation, eventually there came a time where everything just sort of lined up. They were able to get this client the medical resources that they needed. And once they were starting to receive the medication and medical services that they required for a long time, they started thriving. We were able to place her with the help of the officers at the CCNC. And since then, from what I've heard, because once we provided the transport to shelter, they are no longer on caseload. They are now in a different program and they are doing well. And it's a transitional housing program, so she will be there until she gets a place of her own. I hear a couple of pictures. Top left is our case manager, Max. He is giving a client a waiver form for when we transport them, just letting them know that we're not liable if anything were to happen. Bottom left is Max and our case manager, Quinn, who is from the Tustin team, but they fill in whenever there's a spot missing for the City Fountain Valley. They're speaking to a client who was currently living in their vehicle. And on the right, we have an intern. She actually just graduated, but she was also providing services along with Max and Natalie out in Fountain Valley. And she was, she had a small caseload of her own, just so that way she can get her hands dirty and get some experience in this field. This is our impact report up to now, actually, April 30th, pending May's report coming next month. We have a total of 71 exits for this, I guess you would say, contract year from July to July. In that time, we've had 65 exits to shelter, which is a combination of Yale and the CCNC. One temporary exit, meaning that they were placed in a transitional program. And we have five exits to permanent housing. Now, that might not seem like a lot, but given that it takes about three to six months for a client to be considered document-ready to be housed, it is a challenge. So, and on top of that, it's kind of like sort of a lottery situation when they have match meetings every Tuesday. There's a lot of factors that play into who gets housed first. Usually, it's the folks that are older in age, have more medical conditions, and also have been on the street for longer periods of time.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure. And the end is just thank yous. I want to thank the city council for your continued trust in serving your city. I forgot to add there, but also the constituents who are collaborating with us. We've been approached many times by fellow committee members asking for assistance or just information on how to help folks that they've seen around the city. I want to thank Fountain Valley PD for the great communication and camaraderie. Our team and their team hit it off really well. The Senior Center for the Hospitality Encouragement, our team has shared that every time they go. They're always greeted with smiles and a lot of thank yous. As well as the Fountain Valley Recreation Center, which funny enough, I got a call on the way here about a client trying to reach us, and I let them know to follow up tomorrow. But I want to thank them for their referrals and collaborating and getting us in contact with clients that might not have a phone. And then also the Central Cities Navigation Center. They've accommodated our clients and they've actually gone the extra mile to retain a lot of the clients that we put in there. We do try to vet them to the best of our ability, folks that we feel like are on the right path. But Daniel from the CCNC has done a great job and he's helped us a lot, making sure that the clients that keep, put there, stay there until they get housed.
Any questions? Councilmember Grandis, Hopper, it looks like you have a comment.
Yeah, I had a question on the last slide. Can you go back to one before? What's the, what does the community queue mean?
So the community queue is the big cloud in the sky of everyone who's ready for housing. So once everyone has all the vital documents that identify who they are, they are placed in this giant cloud and essentially the County of Orange goes through and they let all agencies know at the beginning, kind of like a, hey, we have three opportunities today. We're going to go down the list and if you see your clients, say aye, and we'll match them to that opportunity. So it's kind of, if there's five available opportunities and our client is number six, we miss it by just that much.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
All right, anybody else?
Yes.
Councilmember Constance?
So, last year, when the contract came up for renewal, I was the lone no, you know, with good reason, timing and all that. And I have to say, you guys really did a 360. And I'm really super, well, you know, 180, you're right. Whoops. And thank you too to our police department. And we see a lot of improvements around. We're very happy and supportive. Thank you.
Thank you for trusting us.
All right. Councilmember Grandis?
Yeah, I want to thank you guys too. Again, a year ago was a different situation. We were like, let's, we've got to do something. We can't just do nothing. And there were a lot of changes that came about. One was the new law or the ruling on the law that was out there that allowed us to enforce anti-camping, so that was helpful. And then a big thank you to Chief Ishi, who was our interim chief at the time, who took a new approach to how we went about making sure that we compassionately offered services and then enforced our rules after that. And Chief Cox, who followed up with that. But a big thank you, Councilmember Constance and I were on the homelessness ad hoc, unhoused ad hoc committee. And I have to say that the work that the team, all you guys have done, is phenomenal. I mean, the successes, the visible success, I know we can't say names or locations, but I think everybody knows who we're talking about. You can't just say, come with me. That doesn't work.
Right.
And the trust that you guys built, but that group, that whole, you guys have done just a fantastic job. I'm very proud of the work and of the ad hoc committee. We're just on there. You guys do it and we appreciate what you're doing. And I want to make sure that, and you're part of that committee as well and the navigation center. And this all comes together and we meet on a pretty, like every other month basis, kind of, every third month, with the updated reports. And it's been phenomenal. So again, I appreciate the complete team effort and I think you're right. I think we, there's a noticeable improvement, so I will be approving this.
Okay, wait, hold on. Vice Mayor Jim, can you have something to say?
Yeah, it's a similar theme, but I want to really personally thank you for being here. I know you went to some great efforts just to be here tonight. I think a year ago, you know, when you all had your annual review with us. The circumstances were challenging, but I really appreciate, you know, you took the feedback, you listened to the comments from the council and feedback from the city, and you really turned it around. And the stories this year are just amazing. I mean, they're almost miraculous in some of these cases and you just go, wow, this really works. You know, the resources and the program, it actually does work. And so I think results are key. It's exciting to learn about those. And just, if you could extend my appreciation to you and your team, you know you have the best Special Operations Bureau, the best police force in the world here, supporting you all. And I'm just really thrilled to be able to celebrate with you this year, after a year of a lot of really big gains. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Jim, for your comment. I'm just curious, do we have a data, or at least have you done any data? What is the number of unhoused population now?
Right now? In fact, I don't, it's very fluid, just because we do have a lot of folks. One of the first questions we asked them is, where do you originate from? Meaning, where was your last place of residence, whether it be apartment, home, whatever? And there are a lot of folks that are passing through. So if it were folks who were just here, I could safely say, having gone on outreach as well, most recently maybe three weeks ago with the team, Riverbed excluded, because that's another pathway where folks come in and out, I feel like the numbers have significantly gone down. And that's another thing too, our agency also provides a census. I'm not sure if it's included in the contract. I'm not really versed in that. But with those censuses, we, if a city is really interested in what number would be right now, within the next two months, we do a morning and, early morning and very late at night, almost close to midnight count. And usually, we kind of sift through the data, make sure that there's no repeat names. And once it's over, we kind of provide a bunch of graphs. And our census team is also great at that. I would say even as far as a bit more detailed than the point-in-time count, just because of its sheer massive size, we were able to condense it just to the city that we're serving.
Yeah, well, as you heard from my colleague, obviously you have stepped up a lot and we want to thank you for that. But I think it's important for the public to know, you know, what is the demographic in terms of unhoused population, you know? What's the number? I think it's important for the public to know those numbers as well. So I want to thank you with that. I want to go back to Lieutenant Fram. If you had one thing to say about CityNet, what would it be?
Responsiveness comes to mind. I mean, they're out there, again, before we're even contacting these individuals. And when our officers go out and make contact, they're calling CityNet. CityNet usually comes back with, yeah, we're already aware of that. And it's just a fluid team, so responsiveness would be probably the one word I'd think of and obviously teamwork as well.
Great, well, that's responsive is very important. So thank you for that comment. All right.
One more comment.
All right, Councilmember Grandis?
Yeah, one thing I want to make sure that the community understands is, I, you know, we're giving lots of kudos and they're deserved, but that doesn't mean the work is done. You know, there is a lot of work that still needs to be done and we need to continue this. And these guys and gals, the work that everybody does is not going to stop right now. So that's why it's important to continue this and continue what's working. We recognize it's not perfect out there, but it's definitely better. So with that, thank you.
All right, I just wanted to double check. We don't have any public comment on this one, right?
No, we have no.
Okay.
I'd like to move the item, please.
All right, we have a, we have a motion?
Yes, I just made it.
Okay, we got a motion by?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Constance and Councilmember Grandis, second.
Item nine passes five zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the Councilmember Constance brought to my attention, I had forgotten, the ad hoc committee for unhoused is tomorrow at 1:00. So thanks for reminding me.
Sure, I'll be there.
All right. Of course, we should have one item, which is study sessions. Can we go ahead and start with that?
I've got the comment, literally.
Yeah, the comment, yeah.
Are we going to unscheduled?
Yeah, let's go with the uns- Yeah, let's go, let's go with the unscheduled matter, so that she's been waiting long enough.
Pat Neal?
Would you like to come back up? Would you like to come back up and finish your statement?
Thank you. The other two items I wanted to bring up, and I know a lot of us have talked about it, we would like to request that when the City of Fountain Valley workers are working on the roads or anywhere, if they could put up signs somewhere that says, when they're doing the work, they disrupt the dens of the coyotes. When they disrupt the dens, the coyotes are out in the community. There is no additional attention paid to that and people are unaware that when your guys are working in the streets or on Newland, for instance, and that, you're disrupting the coyote dens. That makes them go out into the community much more, it's a very simple thing. The other thing, a couple of years ago, I was at a city council meeting and I presented to the council a study by the University of Colorado. And what the study said was, since we have such a problem, if they could put out bait, if you will, for lack of another term, like the salt licks, and it has sterilization in it, by the coyotes eating that bait, by virtue of attrition, they stop producing as many cubs as they do. It was a very simple thing, it was very thorough, I presented it to the council, never heard anything about it, but a very simple, very inexpensive to put sterilization medication in these, in the bait, especially along the river. And those are the things that we wanted to bring up, just put up some additional signs that when they're digging, you will see more coyote. Because I see them two and three walking down my street, my neighbors have had several pets killed by the coyotes, because they live by the greenbelt. The coyotes jump the fence, kill the pets. So this seems like a very simple thing and, you know, we'd like some cooperation and very simple to put a sign up, we're going to be digging, you might see more activity. Very simple. Anyway, those are the last two things that I wanted to bring up, thank you for your attention to those things and I'm sorry if I spoke out of turn, I was told it was an open forum and I could bring up the other issues. Any questions for me?
We, we can't comment, because it's not?
I know you can't, I was just being polite.
Thank you, I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
I'm just being polite responding to your question, thank you. All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and go back to the items. For discussion regarding city policy, regarding city council policy, requiring a majority of city council approval for reconsideration of a past item. Presentation by our city attorney, Mr. Colin Burns.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this was another item that I was asked to present on, this is for council initiated items, items for future consideration. We have an ordinance that talks about items for future consideration, it says that it requires a person, a council member raising an item and then getting at least one concurring vote to have it placed on a future agenda. The way to amend that ordinance would be to add a sentence that says, notwithstanding the foregoing, at least two concurring votes shall be required when the items be considered and one of two options, or others in council discretion, these are the suggestions depending on how restrictive council would like to make it, has been or concerns the same subject as an item considered by council within the previous 12 months. The difference in these two clauses, first, has been considered, it's narrow, and I, I got this text from a resource called Jurassic Parliament, it's a, it's a blog, website that talks about parliamentary procedures, but this is, this is narrow, the, the, the two concurrents, in other words, three votes would only be required when it's the same motion. So in very limited circumstances, the three votes would be required versus if you have the same subject, it's broad. If we've talked about the subject before within the past 12 months, to have it brought up as items for future consideration would require three votes. The same subject rule was taken from the California Constitution, talking about initiatives, so we would, the suggestion would be we would interpret same subject the same way because we have some law, some, some legal precedent for it, and it's, is it reasonably germane to a common theme, purpose or subject? So that, that will grab, that's broad. So if we've spoken about a matter, if another matter is raised that, that is within the same theme, purpose or subject or germane to it, then it would require three votes. So the, the same subject rule would not prevent the item from being discussed again, but in a lot of cases, it would require at least two concurring votes to rediscover something that had been considered 12 months before. Staff seek counsel direction, the alternatives, take no action and leave things as they are, have a narrow rule, has been considered, which means only the same motion can't be brought twice, have a broad rule, same subject, which means that the subject matter has been discussed, to discuss it again, it would take three votes or take some other action.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the floor for my colleague to dive in on this one. Anybody have any comments?
I do.
All right, Councilmember Constantine?
Okay, so first of all, it just doesn't feel right to do this. I have Brown Act concerns and to me, I, I, I just don't understand, I mean, an idea that's being brought forth is merely a moment in time and that idea is either going to get a second by another council member or more, you know, just support, or the idea is going to fail. And I know well the failure, because I've had a few of mine, it's been a while, you know, campaign contributions and this and that, and just, it's a moment in time and I don't think that we need to do something like this, like I said, it really does not feel right and it doesn't make sense to me. And I don't think we need to be fully conscious of, you know, when these matters have been proposed, you know, the ideas, you know, I mean, I did bring up a matter recently about cash to be, required to be accepted under certain conditions, following the, the pattern of an ordinance that the City of Newport Beach is doing. Okay, so that didn't go well, the idea went forth, we did have a study session, we didn't get council member consensus and it could be that in time, you know, a situation changes in the community where we find ourselves having more businesses that are not accepting cash and so the idea could be brought forth at any point in time. So I think this is a non-issue for me.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I'll go.
All right, Councilmember Grantis?
So the reason for this is so that we don't waste staff time. So it's a matter of, it's not a matter that you can't bring it back, it's what's happening is things are being, being brought back and there still isn't consensus, so you get a shot at it and if it goes forward, then that's great. And if it doesn't go forward, then what's the expectation that it's to bring it back again with just one person, you still don't have council majority? I know staff won't say anything about this, but I think they would be very pleased if we were to move forward with this. It doesn't mean we can't bring something back, it just means that we're going to have a consensus to bring it back, so there's a chance that it could move forward. But if it's the same one or two people, they could bring it back every single meeting. So this way, if there's three, then there's a pretty good chance it's either going to move forward or there's a potential to talk about it. So it's just saving staff time, staff effort, you know, the hotel tax is a great example of that. It was brought back twice within a year, I supported it. I was overruled, we didn't have a majority on it, but we could bring that again next meeting, if there's two people that want to do it, and the meeting after that, and the meeting after that. If it, we require at least three, then most likely it would move forward and it's not a waste of staff time, it's just preventing us from bringing the same old thing over and over again that has no chance of moving forward.
Okay, so my question, because this is the point where we discuss it, sorry, Mr. Mayor, but it's relevant. The TOT tax, the potential TOT tax was brought forth by me, that would then, if we had consensus to put it on the ballot at the appropriate election time, not a special election, so timing was key, that's why it was brought up last year before the election, so, you know, it could possibly go. I did not know at that time, three of my colleagues are on the Republican Central Committee. That's a problem for this matter, to get the consensus for the matter to be on the ballot. I'm not in agreement that this should even exist, I will never put myself in a position ever where I can't move for the benefit of this community. So had I known that, and, and, I mean, I knew, but it didn't click with me that that was a thing. So while I don't agree, I do respect the fact that they just can't even support the idea or it's not going to be good for, for their position, so I get that. So what other matter though have we had? And at the same time, before I even say that, once a matter is seconded by a council member, goes to staff, it gets on our agenda, staff will have done the research and whatnot to put it together. When the matter comes before us again and gets seconded by another, the staff already has that information because the research and work was already done. If nothing changes, then that information comes, it's the same, it's just a matter of typing the agenda item on the agenda. If there's any newer information, that would get inserted into the presentation. I don't see that to be tremendously laborious.
Well, in, in your example, it's a great example, in your example, if you wanted to bring it back, you could bring it back as many times as you want, but unless there's three of us who say, let's move forward, it still takes staff time to create it as part of the agenda and all that. Why bring it back unless there's a consensus?
Well, I think it also sends a message too, I mean, depending on what the item is.
You can bring it back every time.
The other one's a moot point, so I mean...
But you can bring it back every time, you just need three people so that it's not, and, and we're not talking about presentations or anything back, we're talking about future consideration. I don't know Maggie, if you want to speak on this, but I think, I think your staff would be appreciative that we don't bring something back that's already been presented unless there's a chance that three of us would move forward with it.
You asked Maggie to speak on it, have you had a separate conversation with Maggie on this?
I, I have had conversations with staff members, yes.
At this point, I'm referencing Maggie, because you asked Maggie to speak on it.
Why do you, why do you care?
It's for transparency, because you say, hey Maggie, you want to talk on it, you put her on the spot, so I'm asking you, do you have a separate, separate conversation on that?
I haven't had a direct conversation with this specific thing, other than when I brought it up the, the first time I talked to her afterwards about it.
All right, okay, I, I'm sorry, I know you have a point, I'm going to make a point to Councilmember Constantine. First of all, I do not appreciate that you characterize the three council member because we sit on the, the Central Committee, that's what, of, of the Republican Party, that's why we're not for this, no. Regardless if I sit on there or not, I do not believe instituting any high tax, as we understand, you just want to label any way you want it, it's a form of increasing tax to the people.
Okay, but wait a minute.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on.
But the tax would not be paid by...
Let me finish my thoughts.
Okay.
I like, you finish your thought.
Okay.
The point I'm trying to, to make on this is, I do not appreciate that characterizations and you just label tax a different way. I do not, we all understand that, why do we need to increase tax to offset a budget? And why do we need so, if the government gets too big, we need to find a way to substitute by find a way, because the city is not in the business of making money, they find a way to tax the people. I do not believe in that. We have to spend within a mean and we have to be competitive in the market, I get it, but we don't find a way to subsidize of no form of tax. That has nothing to do with the party affiliation, it has to do in the belief, how a government should operate, operate within its, operate within its mean, no, because I've been talking on that one. Reference to Councilmember Grantis, to your, to your point, so as you see on here, there's three directions, which directions are you considering?
I would prefer three and if not, then two would work as well, but I don't think it's as strong.
Okay, all right, I want to go ahead and leave the, the floor for discussion for Council, Vice Mayor Jim Cunin, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So can I get back to the topic in front of us, which is really a parliamentary procedure and as a, as a body, what we agree to as rules for discussing ideas, bringing them forward. I, I think the, the broad rule, same subject, I'm not sure that that captures the essence of what we're trying to accomplish here, I think, I think this is, this is a parliamentary procedure. If you look at Roberts Rules, which is a, a source for a lot of the rules for, for governing bodies, they talk about how generally after a, a topic or a motion's been disposed of on a dais, that there is a finality to that. However, a, a motion could be brought back if the body agrees to special procedures. So I think what we're trying to do here is kind of create a, a special procedure and, and I think having a narrow rule to revisit what's been considered helps us be not only efficient, economical with staff time, because we talked about that as a factor, but also it, it doesn't seem to me to be restrictive, because a motion can always be revived, there's always that ability to bring a concept back, it just has a higher threshold of approval. And I think that's really what we're trying to accomplish here is, we agree as a body that if we want to get our idea across the finish line, that we got to do something more. And that's simply the rule, the procedure I think we're trying to develop here. So I, I would support a narrow rule, has been considered, because we know that there are opportunities to, to revive really anything that we want to bring back to the dais.
All right, thank you so much.
Well said, much better than the way I said it, good job.
All right, Councilmember Hopper?
Yeah, for me, it's a little bit of a, if it's not broke, don't fix it, I, I don't think it's really been an issue with the current policy, so I don't see any urgency to change it. What we might do is look at other cities with five council members and see, see what their, what their rules are, but I, I don't really see any need to change the current procedures.
All right, thank you so much, Councilmember Hopper, for your feedback. The only thing that struck me in this, in the question of this proposed rules that's be presented here, I want to look on the different angle. With this, in on items, for example, if we have a council that has, let's say, super, super majority, would this cause problems to the city in the near future? As we could see neighboring ci, uh, city, when they have a super majority, you know, things can get pretty ugly and it might lead to a political gridlock, that's what I'm concerned. Addition to that, this will also impact those who has limit, the minority voice, how's that going to impact on that? And how is it going to also perceive as a political motivated? I don't know, because all I'm hearing is staff time, we're here, we're here to do the people business, right? So that's why we're here. So I perceive the people business important as well, not just staff time. So this concerns me that, you know, by moving to a three is a deliberate choice to raise the bar, typically done in prevent relitigations of issues and promote cohesion, but it also restrict access to the agenda. That is something to consider. Is that what you're trying to do, limit to the access to the agenda for those who might not have a clear voice? That's concerning.
Well, we, we, oh my god, you're going forever. Go ahead.
Patient is a virtue, okay?
Not tonight, it's not.
Well, we're here to do city business.
I told you not to jinx the...
And doing so also can lead to discourage independent thinking. Why? Because they feel like, I'm not going to get on this one, so I'm not going to bring it up. So you discourage independent thinking. That is something to consider of.
I don't know who writes this for you, but you're, you're, you just made the argument for me. If it's a super majority, then it would have passed in the first place. If it's a minority council, then it's already been defeated once and if they're still the minority, it's going to continue to be defeated. Why have staff work on it and bring it back? Your argument is in favor of doing what we're trying to do.
But, but there's other points I've said or raised as well. And second, I do not appreciate, you can say, I'm, I'm not sure who's writing this for you. First of all, this is item, study session, I do my own homework, so I do not appreciate that you make statement as such. It's not appropriate, it's not professional.
And when you always read things and make statements.
Can I ask a question of our city attorney? Now, I think, I think we have kind of an unofficial rule where if, let's say, an item's been brought up, the, the, let's say, Councilmember Constantine brought it up, Councilmember Grantis seconded and then it didn't go forward after the study session, then I think our after the study session, then I think our informal rule is that in order to revive it, then one of the other members would have to sort of suggest the agenda, which is, but I, I don't know if that's, I don't know if we have that rule or maybe, maybe I'm, you know, maybe I'm not.
That's not the way it's made. I hear what you're saying, and that's not bad either. But it's not the way we've been doing it. We've had over the, I don't know, Maggie, help me out here. Over the last eighteen months, how many times have similar items been brought back multiple times?
Well, before you, before she answers, can I ask, can I ask?
Sure. So we have that for an item that has been considered. We don't use that for a study session item. So when an item's considered and there's a vote and it fails three to two, then we do a motion for reconsideration at the next meeting when a person in the majority changes their opinion.
Oh, I got it.
And we use that for.
That's for a motion for reconsideration. Got it. Okay, all right, thanks for clarifying.
And we do use that informally, as you stated. We do use that informally for items for future consideration, where it's been considered with an actual vote.
I, I would agree with you, Councilmember Harper. If you want to do that, that, that does the same thing here.
But it's still.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment? Okay. All right. If I don't hear any more comments, do you have somewhat clear directions? Mr. City Attorney?
We need clarification. I mean, what's our?
I, I would go with Councilman Harper on item number two.
I say number one.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, I guess I, I would say, you know, if we have that as an informal policy, I wouldn't want to make, write an ordinance to, to say that. But I think if we can, that, that would be my thinking. If it becomes a problem, and, and maybe you can, maybe Maggie can now answer your question on how many times has it been an issue in the past. But I, I don't think it's a big enough issue to make a, change the ordinance.
Yeah, if we do it unofficially, I, I'm okay with that. It's just, it's the principle of it. Let's not keep bringing the same things back unless there's three votes. Or in this case, somebody who voted no before, or yes, or however it is, changes their vote, I'm okay with that too.
All right, does that help?
It's a good compromise.
Does that help the direction?
Yes, what I would do is I would take no action. And then if the matter came up again, maybe we could mention it during the council meeting that we had a discussion about, we have an informal policy that we ask one of the majority to take a different position.
Okay. So, no, actually, a second on the, on the item. Okay. All right, thank you so much, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, do we have any item for future consideration?
You want to dare me on this one?
The floor is yours if you like to.
You know, you got me excited for the potential, the TOT tax increase, you know.
You can bring it back up.
I'm scared, I don't know. I, I, no, I won't bring it up.
All right, anybody else? All right, hearing none? Okay. Ms., Madame City Clerk, is there any unscheduled matter?
I have no other requests to speak.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to start with my, to my right, Vice Mayor Jim Conen. Would you please give your report for AB's one, two, three?
Thank you, Mayor. My activities since our last meeting included the following. On May seventh, I attended the office opening for District One, Orange County Supervisor Janet Nguyen. Although I got there after the rest of my colleagues, I was still able to sign the surfboard that resides in the supervisor's office. I eagerly look forward to working together with supervisor and her staff as we tackle many important issues and challenges facing our community in District One. On May fifteenth, I joined Mayor Bowie, council members Harper and Grandis, city manager Lee and community services director Frizell onstage to kick off the annual crawfish festival at Miles Square Park. Everyone looked to be having a festive time, especially with such beautiful weather, fun rides, attractions, and of course, great food. This morning, I presided over the Most Improved Student Awards presented by our Fountain Valley Rotary Club, where we presented certificates of recognition to very well-deserving students of Fulton Middle School, Los Amigos High School, Fountain Valley High School, and Valley Vista High School. It was heartwarming to see parents, siblings, teachers, and site principals celebrate the grit, overcoming struggles, and the amazing achievements of these hard-working students. This was the last student recognition of the school year, and we are so glad to see this observable growth and learning of so many, and so many of our amazing school sites. And lastly, I want to make a special appeal to our residents and those that may be visiting Fountain Valley over this Memorial Weekend. Would you please consider joining us at our annual Memorial Day flag-raising ceremony? I know it's a holiday and it's the unofficial start to summer, but it's not a happy day for Gold Star families and those whose loved ones gave their full measure of devotion, as President Abraham Lincoln so eloquently stated, in remembrance of our brave men and women who have helped guarantee our freedom. So will you join us Monday? Thank you, Mayor.
Great, great report. Thank you so much. Uh, I'm going to start with to my left, Councilmember Grandis.
Thank you. I, I don't have the date, uh, District One meeting with Janet Nguyen at our open house, but I was there. I forget which date it was. And then on Wednesday, May seventh, I attended the OC SAN Audit Ad Hoc Committee meeting. And I also changed, I attended the multi-chamber network at night at the Sinesta. On Thursday, May eighth, Fountain Valley Chamber DAC meeting. On Monday, May twelfth, the OC PA Board meeting. On Tuesday, May thirteenth, the Summer Fest Committee meeting and the Boys and Girls Club Charity Golf outing. That was a lot of fun over at Miles Square Park. I'm a proud board member and happy to help support their fundraising event. On Wednesday, May fourteenth, I'm a board member for the Fountain Valley School District Educational Foundation, and they had their big golf tournament on that day as well. And it was important as a board member to support the nonprofit that, that, and the great work that they do. And a big thank you to Connie Wadley for setting that up. And a thank you for Mayor Bowie. He stepped in for me at the OC SAN Admin Meeting. I couldn't be at both places at the same time, so I appreciate that. On Thursday, May fifteenth, I attended the Fountain Valley Qantas Meeting and also the Fountain Valley Community Foundation Meeting. And I always attend after the board meeting, the volunteer meeting as well. On Friday, May sixteenth, the crawfish festival. And, oh, this is an old one. Let's see. Oops, my notes are wrong. On Monday, May nineteenth, I gave a present, yesterday, gave a presentation at the OC SAN District to the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce. They had their, what's it called, Connect?
F V Connect?
OC Connect. OC Connect, so. And I was the presenter to them before they took the tour of the sanitation district. And I just want to make a comment and say, I'm going to make a nice comment so that Prem Balani makes a donation to the foundation for the Honored Hero Banner Program. And the nice comment is, I do believe that F V stands for Fantastic Volunteers. And I know all of us, all five of us, are very appreciative of all the hard work that all of our volunteers do in our community. So that's my report. Thank you.
All right, to my right, Councilmember Harper. Would you give your report?
Thank you. On May seventh, also attended the open house for our District One Supervisor Janet Nguyen, welcoming her back, actually. She was a supervisor several years ago before she went to represent us in the state. So we're happy to have her back. On May twelfth, attended OCTA Board meeting. May fourteenth, the OCTA Finance Committee. We're going through the budget process right now. So trying to see if, so far, the transportation funding has been unaffected by all the budget stuff, but we're crossing our fingers.